All right, it's seven o'clock. I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. Everybody is in attendance. Kim is online, so she's participating via Zoom. Hi, Kim. Can you hear us?
There she is.
Yes, thank you for accommodating me for this long vacation, or longtime planned vacation I've had. I appreciate being able to join digitally.
Of course. We appreciate that you might have had different plans until, you know, a few weeks ago. All right, so let's go on to the flag salute. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so now we are at, this is the first, the first meeting of the fiscal year, and so we always turn our board leadership over at that point. So we're gonna go to nominating and electing a board chairperson. As in years past, I think I'd like to just start with a general discussion, and once we feel like we're discussed out, then we can make a motion. And there's more discussion after the motion if appropriate, and then we'll vote. Any questions about process? I just wanna make sure it doesn't go by quickly, 'cause sometimes I've been in this position, and things happen really, really quickly, and I was like, whoa, what's the process? And so I just wanna make sure everybody knows what's going on. So, open it up.
Well, I have questions. 'Cause I know you two have been in the position, what, two years?
Two years.
Three. What's the time commitment look like? Also, you guys set the agenda, you meet with the superintendent. Like, how much is happening that the rest of the board doesn't know?
That's a good question. You have to be available whenever there's a thing. That's, that's one of the things of like, you know, if you're at work, that's one thing, right? But weekends are, you know, if something comes up, you're talking to the superintendent. Once, I don't know what Kim's, you know, how she works, but we met for at least an hour every week when we had agendas. That was an extra.
Hour or so.
Yeah, yeah, because the chair helps the superintendent set the agenda. So it's, you know, there are some things that are important to the board that are less important to the superintendent, and then there are more things that are more important to us, like say this, you know, elect the board chair and vice chair. That's really our lane and only our lane, but there are very few things like that that come up on the agenda. Most of the things are superintendent-led.
And is there, when it comes to like agenda and policies, most of that, do we just, or have historically just taken from OSBA and their recommendations? 'Cause it kinda felt that way, but I don't really know if that's how it was, just based on talking to Dan.
We've done a couple of things, and people even chime in those. We've had policy committees, we've had a couple of, you know, board members being on a committee with community members and assistant superintendent, bringing the policies up before it gets to us. We've had just kind of Dan doing that piece. That's, that's a structure that could change, you know?
A lot, a lot of times it will be board members looking through policy and seeing things that may think, well, maybe this is something update. Same with administration. In the past, from what I understood, and what I observed a year been here and before that, administrator would go through and look at different things. OSBA does send out updates when things have popped up around the state that have been of an issue or might be an issue.
Does that just go to the board chair? 'Cause I don't, have we been getting any of those as board members?
No, it doesn't go to me, it goes to Debbie.
No, yeah, generally goes, goes to the district office.
And then, remember, Dan has been helping with that.
And then, Dan and Derek actually was the one that looked at a lot of those before Dan did. Derek could go through them and bring them up to Dan.
And we had that policy work group, too. Remember, we were, we were woefully behind with a lot of the updates that needed to be done, so that's why we formed the.
Wasn't that Janet that was on that?
Yeah, Janet was helping with that, and a few community members, and they were helping get things going. We had like the cover sheets and kind of the Reader's Digest synopsis that they would, that they helped, you know, bring before the board, and then would, you know, share that with the board, and we would talk about it during our discussions when the policies would come before us. But they did some of the pre-work and the pre-discussion, or the pre-research on that along with the OSBA recommendations.
And also in our day-to-day actions, things would come up, would come up, and, you know, would reference to a policy, and it might trigger, hey, we need to look at this, or down the road, maybe tweak it or something. Just something that comes up spontaneously, so to speak.
The OSBA updates are largely, that's an administrative kind of thing, so it's not something that you have a particular obligation, if you're a board chair or a vice chair, to, to work on, except for just to set the agenda. Kim?
Yeah, I was just gonna chime in about that. OSBA does send updates regularly based on, you know, any changes that we have in statute or law. And so like, back in April, we got a big, a large batch of updates from OSBA. And so usually what I do as the superintendent is I go through our current policy and see which ones we have in place, right? Because if we already have that policy in place, then we probably should look at what the update is and, and see if that's the way we should proceed. So those, we, you will have a large policy update in the August board meeting after I have time to go through those with the, with the new assistant superintendent. And then, you know, ones that are controversial or that are complicated, I seek input from other people. So, you know, having a committee is a good idea for policy. I like that idea. And I had administrators come in and help me in my previous experience with policy, too, especially if it impacts their building. Like, if it's a high school policy, if it's related to athletics, like, it's great to get, you know, Andy to chime in on, you know, athletics policy, facilities policies, you know, by the facilities director. So just those types of things, being mindful of who should look at it and who should give input, and, you know, giving it a community glance. It's not super labor-intensive for the board, a lot of the backwork we do.
Anything else, Aaron, that's particularly time-consuming? Tom, anything else that's particularly time-consuming?
Eh, not really. Like I said, you're the one that gets the phone calls. One of the advantages is when you get a, set the agenda, is you get the meeting before the meeting. So that's, that's kinda nice, is to have that access. And I found that enjoyable, you know? So you kinda have a discussion that tracks closely to probably what you're gonna have here. I know I always enjoyed that when I did the job. You know, the policies, yeah, they were just, yeah, we never worked on them, but it was just they were presented for the board, for the board members to discuss, and they always tended to track OSBA's discussion, OSBA suggested pretty closely. But yeah, it wasn't really that, you know, yeah, there's an hour a week and just a lot of phone calls, so.
There are sometimes.
Well, until something hits, you know, what, you know, when problems arise.
Yeah.
You know, then you're on.
Yep.
You are the one.
So like legal issues.
Everyone's calling you, so.
Certain legal issues, if you don't have a superintendent, there's a lot of work that the chair has to do on that, like contracts and, well, we just went through that, so, you know? Yeah, so there are, there are some specific circumstances where it is like you are the person, but for the most part, that hour, hour and a half a week commitment, I think, is the steady, steady part.
Yep.
Of the job.
Yeah.
And, and preside. I mean, really, the, the chair and the, and the vice chair are the presiding officers. Then you gotta, protocol is a big thing. Like, you have to be able to think about the protocol pieces, and that's what's important to me as we move forward, is just making sure that we're continuously thinking about those protocols to make things, you know, democratic, and.
Democratic and order.
Yeah, transparency.
So are we looking for volunteers or nominations?
This is an open discussion.
Okay.
I think that, for me, like, I think we need to have somebody new in this, one of the leadership positions, at least one new person, because we're gonna have turnover. We are, there's only one year left in this term, so having other people that have been through it, I think is important. And I tr, I trust all of y'all. I've thought about this a lot. I, I am good with every single person that I'm sitting next to, and so I just wanna let you know that I have a lot of faith and respect for, for all of you.
I, I wanna piggyback off that, Jennifer. Like, I, I love all you guys. I really like our board. I, I just recently went through every single policy we had individually.
Oh my gosh.
Underlined every single date that had an action required to it, a dollar amount that needed supervision or approval by the board, and I was shocked. And so, um, yeah, I don't, I guess I'm just rambling. I shouldn't ramble.
You were shocked in what way, Josh?
There was just a bunch of them that we, we just didn't. Like, for example, first thing that started was ending fund balance, you know? And then the next one was student transfer dates that are supposed to be brought to the board to vote on. We didn't do that. And it says it's supposed to be done by a certain time, and so I'm like, that's, I just started going, like, how many did we miss? And I was like, well, that's kind of our job to hold the superintendent accountable to make sure that they're getting those things done. And it doesn't, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna say, like, I, I don't think I'm capable of this job yet. I don't think I have the experience, nor do I have, I have a baby, a business that I have neglected for a year, that I feel terrible about, and to my patients. But also, yeah, I'm just, the chair is, is probably definitely not for me. But I also just wanna do the job well up here, and I think doing the job well means that, I think, maybe we just didn't do all of that stuff just because we didn't really need to. But I still think it's our responsibility to look at that stuff, to hold them accountable. But that's just me riffing, and that, that's not here to point fingers, I seriously love everybody here, and I'm holding myself accountable because I should have seen some of that sooner, and I didn't, and I feel pretty bad about it, so I just don't think that I haven't earned that seat yet, or am I ready?
Kim, do you have anything to say about policies and deadlines and dates that are in policy that might illuminate, and you can give us a sense of how you work?
Sure, yeah, no problem. I think that the, the dates that are in policy are important, and I think following policy, policy creates your practice, and I think it's really, it's, be, be mindful to be aware of the transfer portal, class size, you know, there's a, there's a deadline for class size. I mean, there's all these different things, and I have been going through our policy as well, and I have some concerns about some of those things not being followed as well, and I'm really committed, committed to making sure that we stay on track and that we be as transparent and open with our community as possible, because I think that's the way to move forward and the way to heal. And so, you know, I share some of Josh's, Josh's concerns about, you know, how we do things, and, and I, I really don't think that falls on the board. I think that, that work is led through the superintendent's seat. I think that, you know, me putting things in front of you and making sure that you are aware and that make, you know, I've called several of you this week and said, hey, I'm concerned about this, I'm concerned about this, and I'll talk about it during my superintendent's report. But I think that, you know, moving forward, I think it's really, I think this is a really good conversation for you guys to have, and I think that there's, there's no blame on you in any way. I think that this, the work that, you know, goes in front of you comes from an administrative level. I do think there was a lot of things going on in the spring, so that, you know, that transfer portal date, you know, missing that is, it's not the worst thing that can happen in the world. But, you know, I think trying to really be structured in a way that, that adheres to all the state laws and policies is really essential moving forward.
Thank you, Kim.
I think just to follow up on kinda what Jennifer said at the beginning, when I was thinking about this and change of leadership, we kinda have a couple things that we're faced with right now, as you mentioned. We've got folks who'll have a little bit of turnover in about a year, and so we're at that part of continuity of leadership and make sure that that continues. I think you both have done a great job in, in leading, and so I think that's worthwhile to, at least to consider having, you know, for the years to come, that that continuity is maintained. You talked about like succession planning and making sure that we're developing one another's counterparts, so not making pitch for anything, but just general thoughts is, that's a pretty significant, important point that you brought up, so.
I don't hear a lot of eagerness here. People aren't chomping at the bit to do this.
I mean, I have people, I mean, I have some ideas of who, who I think would be.
Well, you can talk about that. This is, this is fine.
Okay, well, speak the truth in love, right? I, I really feel like Phil could step into that role. I think he has majority of the public trust based on the situation we just went through. Unfortunately, there's some of us that don't. And so I think Phil right now is probably my number one pick for me, but again, I'm open to others to argue of why they should or shouldn't or couldn't. Derek, I think you're a great leader policy-wise. You're very sharp, much sharper than I am. My only concern with you is sometimes like, you're here or, you know, 'cause you're so busy up in Portland, and your family, so I just would want you to be present, but not to say that you couldn't. I mean, you're making priorities of making your family first, and I'm trying to do that as well, just coming through it. So those would be my top two right now, but I'm open to others.
Well, I wanna put a, a word in for Derek as, as well, just, just because he's the person that's come to my mind as, you know, you're a very thoughtful person, well-spoken, you know, you're very considerate, deliberative, and I just think that, you know, when I think of the administrative leader for our team, you know, you're a person that comes to mind. And also, thinking about what Jennifer had said at the outset, I think it is important with succession and to have at least one of the, one of the two positions be filled by somebody from that class is important.
I appreciate the kind words. I'm happy to serve our, fifth board. I've got a chance to work with, with Phil, and so we were, you know, I saw this just coming up. He was also someone that came into my mind. I have an opportunity to get to know him a little bit better, and mostly recently working on the contract negotiation, very diligent, and so I think he would serve us well.
Thank you, Derek. Appreciate that. And Josh, and I, and, and you too, Derek. Everything Owen said about you is, can't argue with any of you. And you, you two are great to work with in the committee, and we've gotten, we get it off and on and bounce ideas off each other, and you're very receptive that way, very good.
Are you willing to serve in a leadership position?
Yes.
Does anybody else want it?
I think that's that old adage, the sign of a true leader, usually leadership is thrust upon you by your peers and colleagues.
Well, it's an awkward thing to have, but I think, you know, but it also gives us an opportunity to have, to have these conversations. Again, I, I'm very grateful for all of us here, and I really think we have modeled communication well as a board, especially our chair and vice chair. So I'm not gonna be upset with anybody, whoever it ends up being.
One thing that I do wanna just say in general, and it's, it's awkward, obviously, the whole thing's awkward, but when I was with, uh, vice chair with Jonathan and then working with Aaron, it is nice to have some diversity of thought in that, you know, pair, because when there are controversial things that come up, there is the ability for different perspectives to be given before something reaches the agenda, let's say. Or, you know, a, a lot of what the superintendent's job is, is to read the room and to figure out what the board members are thinking, right? And so that is, if, if the two people have that diversity, you can get a lot just from talking to those two people, I guess. So I, I agree. I think that, that the two folks who we have been talking about, Phil and Derek, right now, I think fit that, I think that fit that bill pretty, pretty well. And I really, yeah, I'm grateful that you are willing to serve.
Yeah, I like, Phil, I like the fact that you're semi-retired, and when the time.
Didn't feel that today, getting out of Hayfield, but yeah.
But when the, you know, when there's been things that have had to be done, you've been able to, you know, you know, utilize that, that time to just, I can, you know, I can handle that.
Right.
And that's, that's a hard thing to do.
Phil's also a stickler for details.
Yep.
Which I appreciate.
Ex-educator.
Yes.
Administrator.
Red pen.
Yeah, I have to say, I've always appreciated the time that Phil's put in. You know, he's always been on top of things and really been available. And again, some of it could be because of his schedule, but I do not, I do wanna say it, you know, without being said that, I appreciate his, always his availability.
Oh, yeah, that's very true. All right, are we ready for a motion? Do we, do you have any preferences, Phil and Derek, over chair, vice chair, business?
Well, and I was gonna ask a question, how are we gonna hold the vote? Is it gonna be for one position, or is it gonna?
We can do it either way.
Or is it gonna be whoever gets the most votes, chair?
Oh, you, you, what we've always done is, there's two agenda items, and so usually like a motion for the chair and a motion, a motion for the vice chair, but if somebody wanted to do it differently, we can propose something different.
No, I'm fine with the standard protocol.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, we've always elected the chair and switched seats and then.
Go on to the vice.
Go on to the vice chair.
Yep.
That's right.
Well, I would like to make a motion for Phil Wiesner to be the next board chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second in for Phil Wiesner to be the next board chair. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Derek.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Phil.
Can I abstain on that?
Owen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, we need to switch spots.
We want to leave this table.
Leaving.
This table, we'll have to leave this table.
Oh, yeah. That's my hand. Thank you.
Okay, could we have, first of all, thank you for your confidence in me, and I worked very diligently to honor that confidence, so. Vice chair, do we have some more discussion along the lines of what we'd like to see there? Do we have a nomination?
I, well, I'd like to second what Jennifer said about having the, the different perspectives. I think you guys have different personalities, and I think you guys have different strengths, so I think it's, that makes a lot of sense to me.
I'd like to nominate Derek Foxworth as vice chair.
Second. It's been moved in second for Derek Foxworth, the vice chairs or any other nominations? Okay, nomination's closed. Take a vote.
Derek.
Can I abstain as well, please?
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to agenda review. Is there any changes anyone has on the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the agenda as published. Vote.
Derek.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, and then we have the designation of all our different things that happen annually as far as chief administrator, officer, deputy clerk, et cetera, on down. Now, we don't, do we need a motion?
I copied it from last year, and it wasn't in the consent agenda.
Okay, so, so is it part of the consent agenda then? 'Cause it's not in.
We're just designating.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to designate the following positions as published in the agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second to designate the different appointments as listed there for designation, and vote on that.
Derek.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, and the consent agenda. I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
And one thing I neglected, is there any discussion?
Good.
Okay, vote.
Derek.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, and then we have first public comment. If you'd like to speak during public comment, and are attending virtually, use the hand, sign, or attending in person, please approach the public table located in front of the board. And this statement as far as procedure-wise, "We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind: If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and recognized by a board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting." A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen, and you will likely will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way of our students, and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement." Is there anyone for public comment? Do we have anybody virtually?
No one has any hands raised at this time.
No hands raised. Looks like we have no public comment. Superintendent report.
Hey, I want to share my screen so I can show you what I've put together for you guys this evening. And I want to thank Jennifer and Aaron for their service as chair and vice chair. That is a huge, huge deal, especially in the challenges we've had this year. And I really appreciate how welcoming you both have been to me. Glad you're still on the board. Uh, so, oh, in a different capacity, but here we go. Um, superintendent's report. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So first thing this evening, we have staffing update. So we just posted, it will go out, I believe, today, the principal position that is combined with Scotts Mills and Silvercrest. And this is due to the resignation of Katie Beckett. We're going to miss her next year, but she has transitioned north. And so we are looking for an elementary principal to serve those two buildings. And we will be in touch with employees from those two buildings to serve on that hiring committee, because I think it's really important that we have, you know, employee voice in that type of decisions. So that is in the works. We did find a candidate for assistant superintendent, and he has a wealth of experience. Was an attorney previously, has served as an administrator, has a lot of HR experience, and was also the executive director of TSPC at one point. So Anthony Rosillas will join us soon, and we're just working on the paperwork and background checks and all that. And we're super excited that I can have him on board. He's going to be a great addition to our team, and his, um, his expertise in HR is really going to be valuable. That's a, that's a huge, that's a huge void to fill. I have been going, so I'm doing some teaching and learning tasks this week and last week, because we, you know, we want to be really mindful about how we spend money. And so reaching out to administrators and other union reps and the different things to talk about some of the subscriptions we have. And so, you know, I've handed a stack of invoices, and I want to make sure that all of those are things we need and are in the budget before we move those along. So some of them, I've already deleted a couple of things. So I think that's important that we really, you know, carefully analyze what we're using in the district so that it's teacher-friendly, thinks that the teachers are really using, and is not a waste of district funds. So part of our analysis of financial information, that was one thing that I decided I needed to take and start working on right now, because those all renew during the summer, after the fiscal year. I've been meeting, I met with the licensed union rep, and, you know, I've been communicating with Vance on a few things. And so just trying to be really proactive about getting feedback on how we process things in the district right now with respect to reduction in force. And that's really important to us, that we get, gather feedback from those folks. The integrated plan, I will be leading that team next year. So that was something that Kim Dowd, she might have to manage, and I've already done that previously in my experience. And so I am going to take that from her, as well as McKenna Vento liaison from another, you know, another administrator that I believe Leslie Roach had it. Because I think that those are two things that I have experience in, and that will be easy for me to manage as part of my superintendent duties. Uh, community outreach, starting, I'm starting to get out there and start, starting to join Rotary and some of those different things, and starting to reach out to folks and try and have meetings and get together with people. So that's really the exciting part of my job, and I really love that part, and so I'm really excited to do that. Reduction in force, I just want to make sure that, uh, anytime, we are really very thoughtful about anytime we're recalling a teacher or an employee, and how that, how that process works, and that we are following the CBA and all the different requirements and the reduction in force, and making sure that, you know, if we have to post any positions, because, you know, we had a resignation recently, that we, we send those out to employees directly who have been reduced in force, because they do not have email anymore, in the district, some of them. So, oh, you know, just trying to gather those people back if they were on a deduction list, and then people that can come back into the district or call back, you know, that just really be very mindful about that process and what it looks like. So we're just trying really hard to make sure that is a very thoughtful process. And I'm going to stop sharing for a second, and I want to talk to you just for a few seconds about a budget concern I have after meeting with Kim Dowd. And I reached out to you this week, and I emailed a few concerns that I had after reviewing financial documents. Here are a couple of things that I'm concerned about, and that I'm trying to get more information on. So the threshold for signing off on expenditures, it doesn't appear that these have been followed consistently. There were potential expenditures and contracts approved by individuals that I don't see having appropriate signing authority in the district. And so those are just a couple of the things I'm working on right now. These are concerning to me. I have reached out to OASBO, to Jackie Olson, to go through some of these scenarios with her and try to figure out the best course forward. My promise to you is that I will always be transparent and act with integrity. And I think that while these things are hard to talk about, these are very hard things to talk about. I think there are things that we need to address, and as we move forward, try and repair some of these things so that we don't ever have that budget situation again. Because my role as superintendent is to be the ending fund balance protector, and that's my most important role. And so I'm just trying to preserve programs and athletics and things that are great for students. And in order to do those great things, we have to be really careful about our process and our protocol and our policy, which we talked about earlier. So I did want to let you know that I am looking into a few things that I thought were concerning, and that I will report back on that. Any questions?
I do. It's probably for you and Owen. So if you're saying that contracts were signed by somebody who wasn't authorized to sign them, are those contracts legally binding?
Uh, I have been in contact with legal about that, Josh, and I'm waiting for an answer. So I think the intent is that you've signed a contract, but I, I don't have official word back from legal, but I did contact legal on that.
Josh, I have the same question, and then for Kim, I think as we move forward, we'll hopefully be able to identify correct sign-off authority and make sure, you know, if individual X didn't have the authority, that we prevent that from happening in the future. My, my assumption is that'll be part of your process moving forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's 100% correct. So, you know, this year, you're going to come in, I'm going to, I'm going to invite you guys into my lane a lot. So I'm going to say, I'm going to say, here's, you know, here's some purchases we're doing. Here's something, you know, that normally wouldn't run that by the board. So, you know, it's usually large purchases over $150,000 require board approval. And there are, there's a huge set of procurement and purchasing logs. And I will send you guys a copy of that, so you can see. I'll send you our policies, and I'll send you, you know, the link to the state site. I think that in, in, in an effort to make sure that we're being really careful about what we do, we have to look at all of those. So normally, the superintendent, you know, wouldn't look at anything that was large in nature. But I think at this point, anything over $2,500 is going to come across my desk. But I, we haven't really gone all through that yet. Like, we're still, Kim and I are still working on a process, and but I just want you to know we're going to be hypersensitive to it. We're going to invite you into our, our lane and provide a lot of transparency around how we're going to process things in the district.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
You want to ask a question for Kim?
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the integrated plan, and what was the other thing that you listed that you were going to take on?
McKenna Vento.
McKenna Vento. Thank you for taking both of those things on. We, I hope we all realize that that's, that's not normal for a superintendent to do that.
We have a great team for integrated plans, so I will just sit with them, and they basically will build the plan, but I'll do the super fun part of putting it into ODE system, which is not fun. It's really challenging. It's a weird system, but I've done it before, so. But the team will build the plan, the district will build the plan. It takes a lot of community input. So, you know, this fall, we'll be meeting with folks and, and trying to adjust our plan. We also have to look at that plan, and we had some budget items go in there that weren't in there previously. So the plan actually needs an adjustment with ODE right now. And so we will have to work on a few adjustments for this year, and then, then building the next plan is, is on the way in the fall, so.
Okay. Hey, thank you, Kim. And now-
You're welcome.
Kim, too.
Thank you very much.
Financing the home.
Yes, well, thank you, everybody. And, and I do want to start by thanking Kim Kellison as well. A lot of these concerns are, are really being heard, and I, I'm very thankful for the transparency that she's committed to. So definitely going to be some, some difficult, you know, maybe conversations as things are uncovered, but I, I really want to thank her for, for that, that year, so that's fabulous. So tonight in On Board Book is the, a financial report that is a snapshot as of June 30th, 2024. Now, this is updated as of today, but it's, it's important to understand that we work on a modified accrual accounting method here. So certain revenues and expenditures will continue to change these reports through the end of August. So that is part of the complexity, of course, of projecting and ending fund balance, those sorts of things. So, but after the August month close, we will begin working on our audit for the 2023-2024 school year, which will produce our final ending fund balance for June 30th, 2024. And that'll be provided to us around the end of the calendar year. So wanted to kind of just walk through a couple of key items here on your report. This is available on Board Book. If you're watching online, definitely easier to be able to zoom in on Board Book as the report gets a little bit small. But, you know, just wanted to point out, as we've talked about, some of our, our revenues are definitely not where our projections were. Our property taxes are coming in about $227,000 lower than what was budgeted. However, as we've talked about, the state school fund formula has a very much a give-and-take relationship. So you will actually see on here, our state school fund formula is coming in about $258,000 higher. And that is a lot of a push-pull relationship. So we had talked about, appreciate Owen asking in a, a board meeting about next year's property tax projections. And, you know, that we may have one figure a little higher than another, and that is where this push-pull comes in. We do look at, you know, building trends, moving trends, house, uh, market value, of course, is, or excuse me, assessed value is capped in our area. So there's a lot of pieces that go into that. But did want to show that overall, our first section here, which we consider state school fund funding, all the things that impact that formula, we are about projecting that we're going to end up about $30,000 higher than what we projected for that entire formula. So projected that we would see 46,300,000, we believe, or excuse me, 46,332,000, we're projecting, we're going to end up at 46,303,000. So right in there. The non-state school fund revenues, the second section here, you know, we have a, a number of things that kind of stand out. Our first line there, 1310 for tuition. It's showing revenues quite a bit in excess of what was projected. I do want to point out that that is a direct correlation to line 1940. As we're going through these financials, we're getting things coded in the correct areas per the state's guidance. Their 140-page cheat sheet that we use. And so what was budgeted in number, in line number 1940 for services provided to other districts, that document is indicating that that really should be recorded under 1310. So those two are a little bit of an offset, not quite meeting that goal. And in that section, you'll see we're coming in about $62,000 under what was budgeted. I did want to take a moment and point out, though, the line 1500 for earnings on investments. We projected $238,000 in earnings on investments. To be clear, this is literally interest on your bank account. That number is going to end the year at $372,000. We have $134,000 of excess revenue this year, just due to interest. Interest rates have been extremely high since July of 2023. They started out at 4.3% in our accounts and have been at 5.2% since February of '24. And just today, the Oregon State Treasury notified us, it is now rising to 5.3%. Unfortunately, that account is not available for all of us to invest into, because, yes, a guaranteed return like that would be great. But I want to take a moment to publicly thank one of our accounting specialists, Sharon Etzel. She works very tirelessly to keep funds in those investment accounts until needed within our operating, what I'll call checking accounts. So it is a, there's a lot of, of transfers, if you will, to, to do that. But an extra five days at 5%, when you're talking a maybe a $1.5 million transfer, it's all adding up. So I just want to make sure to thank her, because that's a, it's a lot to keep track of, of what goes out on what day, but it's definitely paying off, so. You know, the biggest, the biggest point that we've discussed throughout the year is the state and federal sources section. Unfortunately, those revenues are going to be about $2.1 million under what was projected. We've really discussed this a lot, and this, this section alone reflects about 73% of the $3 million revenue shortage that we're seeing this year. Want to turn to expenses real quick and just highlight, on this page, you're going to see, we have a lot more figures in our projected column. And again, it says projected through June 30th of 2024. Of course, we are past that date, but again, due to that modified accrual, we have bills coming in for services rendered prior to 6:30 that are going to affect that. I do believe that some of our encumbrances, meaning a purchase order for, we'll call it waxy supply, the company that supplies all of your restroom products and your paper products, I do believe we might have a little bit extra in our encumbrances, which then that is excellent. That means that projected number should, my goal is that those projections are higher than they need to be, and that this will only look better as we close out those, those charges. So what this is showing us, though, at the very bottom of the over slash under column, is that we are projecting that we're going to come in under budget on expenditures by $12,000. So on a $53 million budget, that's right there. I do anticipate possibly a, a very healthy increase to that under budget number. But again, until we see all those bills come in, that's tough to do. So what that does is, at the bottom of page one, those figures come together to give us an estimated ending fund balance. And as of tonight, I'm projecting a $901,000 ending fund balance. Again, I do believe we have some encumbrances that are going to be able to be released and get us closer to that $1 million ending fund balance. However, I have been using a little more conservative approach in our, our budgeting process, and would love to come back, plan to come back to you in August with another updated 23-24 financial report, but also your first financial report for '24-25. And then we will continue to keep you updated as we go through the audit process on how that, how that looks. So that's my update for tonight. The enrollment report that I've posted on Board Book, just to align with the agenda, is labeled still June 1, no change. We are- We are going to be providing a end-of-year enrollment. Where were we truly as of June fourteenth, the last? Well, technically due to furloughs, our last school day was backed up a little bit, but we will get that updated to a final count of where we ended that school year. And hope to have that data fully vetted for you by our next board meeting, so. Be welcome, take any questions.
When do you expect to have, I know it's gonna be a little bit of flexibility, but the actual F T E list by school?
So that is definitely being adjusted as our building principals are working more at the specialist level of how, what do students at the different schools need in our specialized programs? E L D, English Language Development Staff is something that has been being adjusted throughout the schools. But we should be able to have an F T E assignment by school. I'd love to say by the August board meeting. Right now, our principals are on their summer break, so right now that is, that is, you know, they're absolutely working with us as, as much they can. But there are a lot of moving pieces. We are thrilled to be recalling staff off the, the riffless as, as time goes on. You know, people move out of the area, people change, you know, what, what they have going on. So being able to bring people back onto employment has been great, but we should, I would like to be able to have that for you by the August board meeting, knowing that this may be a, a point in timeline and that some of those specialists, you know, whether it's point-four or point, point-five music at a certain school, right? That could, those adjustments may happen, but you would definitely get an overall ballpark on that. So we should be able to have that for you. We will be without any H R staff after this Friday until August first, so we have a retirement of Sandy Sprower, who has been a phenomenal asset to Silver Falls for years and years and years. We, she will be greatly missed, but, and then due to another extended leave, we will be H R-less until August one, so.
How does that work, then, if we have like a public records request or something?
Public records requests will come through the superintendent's office and our team, we have full access to all of the information, and the, we will switch hats, and we will take care of that.
I've got one more, sorry, guys.
Absolutely.
Brandon, can I ask you something? Cause I, I'm glad you're here. This, can you, I know we talked a little bit before, the high-cost disabilities. And are there, I'm sure there's rules and laws that say, well, first of all, can you explain to me which groups of kids or programs fit into that program first? I've still not quite tracking it.
So like which of our students qualify?
Yes, I'm assuming that's functional skills.
Yeah.
Is in that?
So it would be not all, but the majority of the students are in our specialized programs, specialized.
And so, and then those students that are tagged probably have certain requirements that are associated with them of certain staff ratios or certain trained staff to handle those particular students. Like, there's no flexibility in that. I guess what I'm really trying to understand is, or, and be clear about is, these kids require these services, and we're not gonna tell these kids they can't come here or we're not gonna provide these services for you. This is just something, it is what it is until the state fixes it. There's nothing on our end to try to change this line to be more favorable, correct?
As, as far as like how we're identifying students?
No, the cost associated.
Or the amount that we get back. So I don't, I don't know that we have any control right now over the amount that we get back from, from the state, because as more and more students are qualifying, the cost of educating students is going up, the percentage that we're getting back is gonna be going down. I think for me and, and for our leadership team right now, you know, working with Kim, just to budget more conservatively about what that would look like for next year, just so those numbers are a little bit, a little bit closer. And our numbers will fluctuate a little bit year to year. They might go up a little bit, but the number of students that were identified largely is not going to change drastically. I mean, it's not like we're gonna have twenty new students move in that are, cost us a lot to educate.
So Josh, I think I, I understand what you're getting at. Like, we cannot deny services because we don't have enough money to pay for it.
Correct.
Yeah.
And nor can we reduce our staff numbers because there's laws that say we have to have, provide these certain services.
Yeah, that's not a, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not adjust, I mean, the services are individualized to the students, so that, that case manager, that I U P team, that the family, everybody that is involved with working with that student. And they identify what services that student needs, and, you know, that piece has not, has not changed. And we're not making wholesale changes to I U Ps based on budget, other things that are coming up. And that question did come up with some families in the spring as we're going through I U Ps, and how is this staffing going to affect services for students? And, and we're, we're not changing the level of service for, for students. And I think our, our special programs are gonna be able to continue to serve students at the high level that they have been. And I think for us, you know, the, the reduction in force is, is going to hurt like, like everybody else. But I also think there are some programs that are better positioned to absorb some of those than, than others. And so I think it's finding that balance of continuing to serve students, but also within our needs moving forward. And, and I guess the other piece with that, too, you know, the question was about staffing. I think that, you know, for the most part, our certified staffing, I don't think is going to change in my department, but I could see some classified movement as the school year starts, just with what students move in, what students move out. You know, until we release these students in, in September.
Josh, oh, sorry, go ahead, Aaron.
No, I was just gonna say, in order to, just so I have the figures right, in order to qualify for the high-cost disability reimbursement from the state, the, the cost per student has to exceed thirty thousand dollars, correct? So anything, we're applying for the over thirty thousand into that pool.
Yeah.
And to your point, Brandon, there's just more and more kids, unfortunately, that are from all the districts across the state. They're applying for that reimbursement or that grant, and the pot hasn't gotten any bigger, and that's the issue.
The, the percentage of students across the state that identify for special ed has steadily gone up.
Skyrocketed.
The cost to educate those students has gone up, and we're.
But, yeah, it's what, the, the main, the, the thirty thousand's the key, that, 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 once a student cost is over thirty thousand, they're able to apply for that high-cost disability reimbursement from the state.
In our A D M R, that number for special education is capped at thirteen percent, correct?
Eleven.
Eleven.
So if we have thirteen percent of our district or, we're not gonna get an additional ranking, the state caps it.
We're, we're at about fifteen percent or so.
Oh, wow.
In, in line with state average, just a hair under, but, yeah, percentage has gone up a little bit.
Josh, is your concern that, sorry, I think Kim was gonna chime in, but is your concern that we're providing a service that the state isn't helping cover?
That, that's it, and also, also like, is there anything that we can do as a board? And the answer is, from my understanding, no, this is, this is a decision that's way above us, and we have a responsibility to provide services to our students to the best of our ability, and unfortunately, it doesn't like we're being given the tools to fix this glaring number in our budget, but it sounds like we're not alone.
We, we can advocate. That is, that is one of our functions, is to advocate to the powers that be.
And I've done that. I've just sat down with Rick Lewis.
I know.
Times, and they're working on it amongst other things, so.
Yeah, Kim's talked about that, too.
I think now. And I guess. Kim, maybe wants to chime in.
Yeah, just wanted to chime in real quickly and say, these two areas are, are really of great concern to superintendents across the state. And those of us that are in the funding group will meet on July thirty-first. We have requested changes to how we fund high-cost disability and sped weights and all of that. And so we're hopeful that the governor, LaHira's, I mean, we are in a very focused group, we'll be together all day. We are really working hard to make sure that our needs as districts are known to her and their team.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, and I guess, Kim, I, I'd like to, you know, you mentioned more information about, about our enrollment going forward. I know we, we get these financial reports and we look at our expenses and things, but another thing that, that matters to how we fund our things is our enrollment, and it's been declining, and I think we need to have an honest discussion about that.
You are absolutely right. Enrollment and expenditures must, must be tied closely together, and adjustments must be made when enrollment figures change. At this time, we do not know how many kindergarteners are going to walk in the door. Is it going to be similar to what we have this year? Will it be higher? Will it be lower? And that is something that I believe Joe Morlock had, had referenced a couple of times, that maybe by the third day of school, then, people start realizing, oh, wait, I was supposed to bring my kid a couple of days ago. And so it, it does become, you know, a, a definite live adjustments that, that must be made. If we end up with a, a surge of kindergarteners, we will need to look at our F T E. If we end up with a, not meeting our, our projections on our kindergarteners, we will need to have some discussions of whether or not the budget can sustain that, cause that will directly impact revenues.
Yeah.
Question for Kim Dowd. I'm looking at the transportation services on the expenditure. Can you unpack that just a little bit for me? How is that paid out? It's obviously a contracted service, but I'm assuming it's based on number of hours or just kinda, and I know we made some modifications or reduced some routes. I'm trying to figure out what that's gonna look like at the end of.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yeah, that, that is definitely a contracted service with a cost per route per day. The routes vary in cost based on whether it's a general education route, a special services route. We, we have a lot of costs. These costs here are exclusive to the general fund. These do not include athletic transportation costs that may be paid for by one of the sports themselves. Now, some of the general fund, the general fund does cover a number of the athletic transportation costs, but there are also other funding sources. So, you know, I, it is a significant overage on the budget. I don't have the information right now as to exactly where that projection came from last year. We possibly had to add routes. I'm not, you know, clear on that. I do know that we had hoped to reduce our transportation routes next year or costs by doubling up our routes, meaning running one age group, running a second age group, as we've discussed with you guys. That created some logistical barriers in our schools that, that were not feasible. So next year's transportation budget, we do, we do hope is, is sufficient to, to meet this, this increased cost. And, you know, we, like I say, it's, it's a very difficult piece when we, we don't have our route prices, you know, all the times in advance, or we don't know our counts. We have a couple of students possibly move in under special education that might need singular transport. We might need to use private, I don't mean private, but individual one-on-one transports for student safety. We may have a student that is transported to another location quite a ways away, and we do have, we do have some of those. And that is part of what goes then into high-cost disability grants, the portion that can't, isn't reimbursed by transportation grant, so.
And does that get billed out monthly?
Yes. So you will see, we are anticipating another three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in expenditures. That is because we have not seen the final bill for the last three weeks of school. So that is a, a three, that is my estimate for the final three weeks of school.
Okay. So we'll be able to just keep an eye on that as a school year progresses month by month?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Absolutely.
So I'm just gonna, you know, this is important to the community, that's why I'm asking, food services. When do we find out about that contract? I know that Joe was working on that, and Joe's not here. I don't know if Kim, Kelly, that probably got thrust upon her. Is it, you know, I doubt she was anticipating to do that work.
No.
But what's the timeline on that?
So the contract was signed and submitted and approved by the state of Oregon by the deadline. So the contract for our food service management certification or contract, that has been completed and approved. We are meeting next week with our food services team to continue our evaluation of our program and how we can meet some of our financial concerns and find a way to implement the community eligibility provision, which is the free meals for all, C E P program. It is undoubtedly a benefit to our students and their families. We have to make sure we can afford to do so.
So I'd like to share a story with you personally on that food service. I went to the school to go pay my, I thought my, my, I owed money because my son keeps wanting to eat breakfast, even though he had breakfast. And so I'm always inevitably having to pay a bill. And I go in and they go, oh, you don't owe anything. I'm like, how? And they pulled the contract and said, oh, you're on a reduced lunch or reduced breakfast, but we don't do reduces either free or you pay. And I was starting to ask them about the balances. They said, some people have like a thousand-dollar balance, a fifteen-hundred-dollar balance, and they're just not paying it. And so what's our rules for these outstanding balance? I know it's hard, but I'm hearing from these people in the, that work in school, like, they can pay it. They just feel like they don't have to because they never have to. Do, how are we handling that? Or do we have, I think the policies specifically that we're supposed to follow for that? Cause I remember the previous superintendent was like, we're not ever gonna do that.
There you go. The, under previous administration, the direction was that we would not send families to collections, and that is our only next step.
Do we know what, just from balances that are owed by families are estimated, like across the district?
I don't have that available right now. I'd be happy to look into that for you guys.
Oh, you don't? I'm just, if you had it like, you know, if it was a large number, like a hundred thousand dollars or something like that.
I, yeah, I, I would hate to speak on that. It's a pretty sensitive topic, of course.
Sorry to put that on you.
So I, you know, we would be happy to get a total on that.
Okay. Sorry, Kim. Thank you.
No, no apologies. Please ask.
Okay. Anything else for Kim? Thank you very much. I do not even fathom how you can keep all that straight. So, thank you. Okay, now we have a discussion on the template for our agendas for the, this coming year. We have on there, you have Board Book, what we presently have, and we have some discussion concerning the template.
I think it's a meeting our needs.
Aaron? Anybody have any tweaks they'd like to make to it?
I, I have no changes that are glaring. I think we're capturing everything. We always have good placeholders for any and all business. No, I, I'm, I, I think it still looks pretty solid unless anybody has any other reason to change it.
I like how we do an open public comment and then a focused one, like that.
Many people tell us we have too many public, too much public comment time, but the community really likes it. And I actually do really like the, the second public comment time because it's, the board discusses, and then the public can listen to that discussion and say, well, hey, you're not thinking about this, you know? So I, I think that part's important.
And the second one is supposed to be limited discussion action items, but we generally don't limit that. We haven't. It's been our practice not to limit it.
And maybe that's worth, it seems to serve us well. Do we wanna keep it to the specific if we're using as a general? That may be the only minor tweak.
As far as public comment?
Yeah, to, to Aaron's point, you know, the second one is supposed to be a little bit more narrow as opposed to a general, but I don't have an issue with it.
I mean, I think the idea is that if somebody wants to speak on a general topic, they come and speak, and then if they're prompted by our, you know, our discussion or a specific action item, then they.
Before we take action.
Speak then, so, I mean, personally, I think it makes sense, but the way we have it, but like you said, you know, we haven't strictly followed it at all. We haven't really made a point of it.
And generally, most folks, if they, if, if it's on, you know, those conversations or in comments are generally sparked by discussion or an action item. The public has done a nice job, in my opinion, of, of seeing that and keeping it germane to what we're discussing.
And I'm personally, I mean, just personally, I'm in favor of as much public comment as people, you know, want to give them. I'm here to hear it.
Right. Don't wanna limit it either.
Well, especially since, in all essence, it's the only time that we get, you know, other than emails, that sort of thing, to hear from the public, so. Okay.
And I do like the fact that we had to make amendments for like comments, cause I know we've done that. We've moved S F E A around or a public comment around. I mean, I thought we handled that really well.
Right.
In the past. I thought you two did a great job doing that, so.
Yeah, and I think that's just another, another point, is that this is. Yeah, and I think that's just another, another point, is that this is the template, there will be reasons why it is adjusted and that Chair and the superintendent can do that at will.
When there seems a need, it can be adjusted on a per meeting basis, but template means what we start with. Okay, now we've reached the second part of our, uh, the, uh, comment that we just talked about. And, uh, getting here my cheat sheet. Uh, specific to the discussion and action items. If you'd like to speak during public comment or attending virtually, use the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you are attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the board. Do we have anyone? Well, please identify yourself and.
Linda Kents, and I work for the school district up at Silvercrest.
Okay, you speak on behalf of yourself or a group?
Uh, myself. I was not planning to do this, and it's very hard for me to do this, so please understand and be patient. A couple of comments, um.
He interrupted, but we'll get three minutes.
So I just found out that our principal is now not with us anymore. And I, we all, I think we all really liked her. The whole problem, the, my concern is that, like, the last ten years Silvercrest has had, I don't know how many principals, too many to count. There's no continuity. We had Mr. Racker, and he was there for many years, and he was really good. My kids went to school there. That's how I know him. I wasn't working then. So now she's gone again. How is that? I know you must be aware of it, but the staff and the kids, that's, I mean, I'm not kidding. I bet there's ten principals in the last ten years. Eight? Okay, so that's why, I know you're gonna consider that. If you find another one, hopefully, they will be willing to be as passionate as Ms. Linder was and stay with us. Then the other one is the lunch count. If we have to have our hours cut, which I'm assuming we're going to because everyone's been getting cut, and there's many, many dollars out there that are not collected, I don't feel like that's fair to us employees. You know what I mean? I'm a lunch lady and okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any hands raised?
No hands raised online.
Okay, any comment then? Okay, we have a action item of the, uh, template for our future template review for our agenda and entertain a motion on that.
I move that we approve the template as published.
Second. Been moved in second to accept the template as published? Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, vote?
Derek.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, do we have any future agenda item requests other than what's been previously talked about?
Question about it, the ones that we had talked about before, how does that work about those requests?
Well, I.
I can, I can forward the list to Kim and.
Give me a list and then we'll, that list, and then we'll see if we can whittle away at it. That's how I see it, so.
Some of it, I I know the ones that have been brought up are require some, quite a bit of staff time.
Right.
Input and perhaps even from Kim, our new superintendent, or both, both Kims.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think, you know, some of that needs to be considered. As as fast as we can address those items, we also have to be respectful of of what's going on right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, don't, don't overload yourselves, um. But as far as the future agenda, that that list, maybe from time to time, if you could forward it to the rest of the board, then we could just review it and go like, you know what? Someone suggested that a year ago, that's a pretty, I'd like to second my voice to that or not.
Yeah.
That's a good recommendation.
I I think that's okay for me to do. I'll just blind copy everybody and just say, this is, these are the things that I had on my, in my notebook.
Periodically, just Chair sends it out or something.
I remember you you recapped that, Jennifer, several of those items at the last meeting.
Yep, and it hasn't changed since then.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, is it, would it be appropriate, I'd like to just make a small, um, say, or just say a few words about Jennifer and Aaron, is that okay?
Oh, certainly.
I've just been reflecting on this. I wouldn't have been able to do it, um, the amount of emails you guys had and just the social media stuff. You guys handled yourself so professionally, so well. I respect you guys, um, so much. You guys have a strength that I do not have. So, and going through COVID on top of that. Jennifer, I know, Aaron, you had a little cap, then you walked right into the middle of COVID, right, around that time, and I sure hope we have some calmer waters forward, cause this has been quite a run, but I I just wanna acknowledge your guys' professionalism and how you guys handled yourselves up at that center table, and I'm extremely grateful for it cause it made it easier for the rest of us as well. And I'm, I'm personally very thankful to you guys for the grace of which you guys sat in those seats.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay.
Yeah, well said.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.